Welcome to tonight's pre-meeting for June 10, 2024. First, we'll go over this, I know we have agenda item, consent agenda item B coming off of the consent agenda. Is there anything else coming off of the agenda? Not off, but by itself, okay. And any questions about tonight, open?
Nope.
Okay. Then city council report. I'll start with Councilor Iron.
Okay, I forgot to report that I went to Zoe's with the brutal. We talked about the airport and affected in their city. We also talked about their new main street, the street that's kind of like our new downtown. But they're going to have a lake to draw people in. Also, I went to the Adams County luncheon, state of Adams County luncheon. They had a demographer there talking about the population and where it's headed in Adams County. I was interested to note that the average age in Adams County is 31. So they're pretty young compared to Jefferson County. It's one of the top three growth areas of Colorado. So they're growing when Jefferson County isn't so much. Also, I went to Top Golf for Adams Five Star School District, which was fun. I golfed with the Broome Field City Council. And we talked about wards. And they have five wards and two from each ward. None of them are at large except for the mayor. They say it works really well because they just alternate. So someone with some seniorities on there all the time. So every two years someone will be new, but they'll still have someone that already knows what's going on. So I think that's a good way. They said they only spent about 15,000 for their campaigns because they can hit every house. And they have about 9,000 in the population that they go to. Anyway, they raised 240,000 at this event. 365 people were there. I won closest to the pin. So I felt really happy about being there. I went to the summer block party along with the mayor and Councilor Hart and Councilor Zadi. The turnout was really good and the weather cooperated while we were there. So that was good.
Beautiful.
Yeah, it was beautiful. And the turnout was really good, so that was a good occasion. And I was trying to go to Jefferson Quarterly meeting on WebEx, but I found out I don't have WebEx. So I couldn't get in. And I tried to get into WebEx, but I need the IT to put WebEx on my iPad too, along with Teams. Anyway, that was my week. And also Xfinity is laying fiber optic in my neighborhood today. So it's coming.
Councilor Camille. Yes, it was a busy week. It was a fun week. I went to the fire department. We had that Tours and Topics meeting on Tuesday, and that was really informative. It was fantastic. Got a great tour of the station. Oh gosh, I forget which one it was now. Forgive me. Okay, well, it was great. And they did a great job. And I also was hoping to make the Jeffco Quarterly, but I missed it. So I'm really hoping that somebody was able to go because it was hard during work hours to get there. I did a chamber interview today, and that was a lot of fun. They're fantastic to work with, and that went really well. So you know, if you're bored, go ahead and check it out. That was really great, and they're a lot of fun to work with. Over the weekend, attended Adams County Pride. And as always, that was really well attended, and that was a lot of fun. Saw lots of folks that I know there. And I really appreciate that that's an opportunity to meet up with different pieces of the government in Adams County. All Adams County, I feel like, has booths. You know, you can meet up with human services, and you can meet up with the folks from the foster care department. You get to talk to everybody. And I also have had a lot of meetings throughout the week, just based on our study session from last week. Folks have come up with concerns around, you know, the decision we made and whether or not, you know, there might be reverter clauses within the parcel of land that I don't think we really discussed that piece. So I talked to our Jefferson County Attorney, Anthony Chamberlain. He said that there may be a reverter clause in some of that land that we need to look at. So I think that there's more information forthcoming. But we're going to have to find out what that looks like and what our options are. So I just thought that was interesting, and I don't know if we looked at everything around that piece when we resumed it. So I think more info is coming on that. He promised to get me info hopefully by tomorrow, and if not, definitely by next Monday. And then I also had some conversations with folks at Boulder around Rocky Mountain Greenway because they're trying to back out of that whole trail system piece. And so just, the discussion was just, you know, where are we? What can we do? And I don't know if there's a lot of clarity there, but I've talked to several residents around that as well who have come to me with their concerns. And I'm just trying to figure out what that path would look like if there is one. And just know that once I have more clear answers, I'll bring them. But just, I want to be transparent about everybody I'm talking to. And yeah, always in information collection mode.
Councilor Hart. Yeah, so, excuse me. I also attended the Tours and Topic at the fire department. And that was really exciting to learn about our fire department. So we have one of the best fire departments in the entire country. And I think that we should maybe brag on our fire department a little bit more than we do. So it was really great learning all the technology and the, you know, thinking outside of the box and things that they've put together. And, yeah, it's just really great. And then I also attended the Adams County State of the Region. That was very interesting. And also went to the summer block party. That was a lot of fun. And then I went to a Conservation Colorado event. It was an end of legislative session update. And then also attended Adams County Pride this weekend, which was a lot of fun.
Councilor Zadi.
Let's see, so last week was, and actually heading into the weekend and still to come, I was meeting with residents, talking to residents, and will be primarily around, you know, response from where we are with the dog park. So just continuing to hear diverse voices wanting to be heard, not only residents within the city, but some from without, or from, sorry. I'm already tired, that's not good. Some that live in neighboring communities. So I appreciate the diverse perspectives about just overall conservation and concern about, and hope for maybe some type of greater compromise. So that's what I'm hearing. And I had a bunch of family in town. So I did, I was able to stop by the new Vato's Tacos grand opening in the downtown. So very yummy tacos, so that was fun. Thanks for letting us attend those. That's, yeah, that's all I have for now. I'm looking forward to our listening session later this week.
Councilor DeMar.
I too went to the AC Rep Luncheon. It's always informative, and I love the speakers. I did go to the Jefferson County Commissioners meeting, so did Mark. And we had a subject on there that neither of us knew anything about. So we're researching with, I'm talking to the mayor's, he's talking to staff. They were talking about some housing pieces that we have clearly not been at the table at. So, but that isn't unusual. We are the furthest north. We're only partially in Jeffco. So, hey, I've been at galas where we're the only ones that have a table, and they forget to introduce us. So I'm sort of used to that. So I told him that, and I said, we'll figure this out, what they're talking about and how we get plugged in. But a lot of talk about unhoused and what each of the different communities are doing, who they're partnering with. Our Vada gave an update with their situation. So it was a jam-packed meeting that went up until the hour. I think we went a minute over, so lots of discussion. Saturday night, I had the Mong Gala. Mong women were doing a two-day workshop of teaching people leadership skills down at the University of Denver. I got a call that I was being given an award. Could I come down? So I called my daughter and said, I don't know how to get around DU. I need a co-driver to help me. And they gave us the wrong address, so thank goodness we ran into a police officer. Didn't run into him, but he was there. So we stopped and said, can you tell us where this is? And so he got us there. But I was honored with a community award for the Mong group, so that was good.
City managers report.
Do it at the diocese tonight.
Okay, oh yeah, okay. Anything else from anybody? We'll see everybody at the diocese at seven.
Yeah, we tried them.
Welcome to tonight's meeting of May third, uh, May, uh, June. It's June. Why do all these things say May in front of me? Um, June 10th, I believe. Thank you. Um, 2024. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the City Council meeting of June 10th, 2024. We thank you for coming and would like to remind all in attendance that our meetings are subject to the rules of decorum that are posted inside the chamber doors. These rules are in effect while all meetings are in session as well as during breaks and transitions between meetings. We want to be sure all feel welcome and remind all there is an expectation that no attendee shall disrupt this meeting and that threats and intimidation are prohibited. No attendees shall engage in audible expressions of support or opposition for any speaker. Signs and placards are prohibited and all attendees shall remain seated in the seats provided, not the aisles nor shall the doorways, uh, nor shall the doorways be blocked. That brings us to consideration of minutes of May 6th and May 20th.
Mayor, we need to call roll first.
Oh, go ahead.
Counselor Carmelia.
Present.
Counselor Demat.
Present.
Counselor Azadi.
Here.
Counselor Haat.
Present.
Mayor McNally.
Here.
Mayor Protimnor Mella.
Get one of these.
Yeah, and, um, Counselor Ireland.
Here.
Now, do we have, um, motion for minutes of May 6th and May 20th? Um, Counselor Carmelia?
I move to approve the minutes from, uh, May 6th and May 20th.
Uh, Counselor Demat?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve, I, uh, minutes for May 6th and May 20th. Mayor, um, Counselor Demat?
I'm just curious if those are the right dates because down here it says the 13th and the 20th. So I think I'd ask the clerk to.
It should be May 13th and May 20th.
So I'd just ask amendment for the 13th and the 20th.
I amend the motion for the 13th and the 20th.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of May 13th and May 20th. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to always our wonderful presentations and tonight Counselor Haat will present proclamation for Pride Month.
Are members of the inclusivity board here? Thank you. Sure. Would you like to introduce yourself?
Sure. Miguel Mendoza Hall, a member of the inclusivity board.
Seth McGinnis, I'm a member of the inclusivity board.
Rich Chamberlain, also a member of the inclusivity board, in case you didn't guess.
Thank you. I love your goatee. So this is a proclamation for Pride Month, whereas the city of Westminster has committed to make our community more welcoming and inclusive for all, including the LGBTQIA+ community, and whereas the United States Supreme Court ruled in June 2015 that same-sex couples can ma- can marry nationwide, establishing a new civil right in our country, and whereas former President Barack Obama designated the first national monument to LGBTQ+ rights in June 2016 honoring the LGBTQIA+ community's long-term presence and struggle for equality across our nation, and whereas all members of the Westminster community, including those who are lesbian, gay, bisexual, transa- transgender, queer, or questioning, intersex, asexual, non-binary, and two-spirit have the right to feel safe, not be discriminated against, and to live without the threat of harassment, and whereas supporting the Westminster's LGBTQIA+ community also aligns with the city's objective to create a more inclusive and equitable community that promotes unity and honors diversity, and whereas the city has added protections for the LGBTQIA+ individuals with an inclusive nondiscrimination policy stating that no person shall, on the grounds of race, color, national origin, sex, disability, religion, or age, be excluded from participation in, be denied the benefits of, or be subjective, subjected to discrimination in any operation of the city. The city of Westminster extends this coverage to ensure that no person is unlawfully discriminated against on the grounds of immigration status, gender identity or expression, or sexual orientation, and whereas the LGBTQ+ community has made great strides, however, work remains in order to achieve full equality, inclusion, and acceptance. Now, therefore I, Nancy McNally, mayor of the city of Westminster, on behalf of the entire city council and staff, do hereby proclaim the month of June as Pride Month. So, and call upon the people of Westminster to recognize and celebrate Pride Month. Thank you.
Next up, we have a proclamation for Juneteenth. Counselor Azadi.
Come on, Richard. Stay up there. Come on. Raise your hand if you know when Juneteenth became Colorado's 11th official holiday. What year? No. Yes, 2022. Sorry, I like crowd participation sometimes. You ready to introduce yourselves?
Yes, absolutely.
Nice to see you. Thanks for being here. So I should probably pick this up and read it. Very important day. Um, Juneteenth is next Wednesday, June 19th. So whereas Juneteenth marks our country's second Independence Day, and whereas Juneteenth, also known as Jubilee Day, Freedom Day, and Emancipation Day commemorates June 19th, 1865, and whereas the day's name is a combination of June and 19th in honor of the date of the announcement, and whereas Union soldiers led by Major General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston Bay, Texas, and announced the end of the Civil War and declared that more than 250,000 enslaved black people were free, and whereas many enslaved in the state of Texas and other states had continued to hold enslaved people captive despite the Emancipation Proclamation having been issued by President Abraham Lincoln on January 1st, 1863, and whereas the speech of Frederick Douglass delivered at the first annual National Juneteenth rally in Washington still resonates with many seeking equity and justice for all, and whereas the city of Westminster stands with all who stand for justice and humanity and celebrates our independence, and whereas the city of Westminster condemns all acts of othering in the shape of overt acts or microaggressions, now therefore I, Nancy McNally, mayor of the city of Westminster, on behalf of the entire city council and staff, do hereby proclaim June 19th, 2024 as Juneteenth in the city of Westminster, and I call upon the people of Westminster to join together in honoring the resilience and contributions of African-Americans in our community and across the country. Sign this 10th day of June, 2024.
Inclusivity Board, stay put as, um, Counselor Carmelia comes down for Immigrant Heritage Month.
Thanks for all you do. All right. Well, I get to shake hands too, so.
That works.
Thank you so much. Thank you for being here, for all the work you do. Um, all right, I'll get right into to for immigration. Uh, whereas generations of immigrants from every corner of the globe have built our country's economy and created the unique character of our nation, and whereas the city of Westminster recognizes its rich history of immigrants who have played a vital role in diversifying our community, immigration is built in the foundation of this great nation. It is a source of the strength we hold and something we all should take pride in, and whereas the city of Westminster is home to diverse communities, including immigrants from Mexico, refugees from Laos, and many other cultures and identities. I have a, uh, someone from Ukraine living with me, so many other identities for sure. Uh, whereas the entrepreneurial drive and spirit of our country is fueled by the unique origins of Americans, and whereas immigrants are an important part of Westminster's history and continue to contribute to the economy, science, academia, culture, and the arts, and whereas immigrants have been tireless leaders, not only in securing their own rights and access to equal opportunity, but also have campaigned to create a fairer and more just society for all Americans, and whereas despite these countless contributions, the role of immigrants in building and enriching our nation is frequently overlooked and undervalued throughout history, which continues to the present day, and whereas Westminster's immigrant population adds to the variety of languages, customs, celebrations which contribute to the cultural diversity enjoyed in the city, now therefore I, Nancy McNally, mayor of the city of Westminster, on behalf of the entire city council and staff, do hereby proclaim June 2024 to be Immigrant Heritage Month in the city of Westminster and call upon the people of Westminster to join together to build stronger connections to our neighbors and fellow community members across the city in the spirit of our history. Thank you. Thank you.
That brings us to public comment. The public comment portion of the meeting is an opportunity for the public to come in, communicate with the city council. Each participant will be given no more than five minutes on any topic they choose. Public comment is not intended to be a back and forth discussion. If there is a public hearing scheduled for the item that you wish to speak, please hold your comments and testify when the public hearing is called. Tonight, there are no public hearings. This evening, the city clerk has informed me that we received 14 emails and zero voicemails by the deadline, which, which have been transcribed, posted, and online agenda packet, and forwarded directly to city council. City clerk, would you please call our first live speaker?
The first speaker we have is Mary Joy Barajas.
Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Mary Joy Barajas. I am a city resident. I live at 4845 West 116th Court, and I'm here to express my disappointment with the June 3rd study session direction that was provided to PRL staff regarding the Westminster Hills Open Space Dog Park. My husband and I do not support council's direction to continue to allow off-leash dogs on the entire 470 acres. As residents, we don't want to continue to see the deterioration of this picturesque open space to continue. A majority of council didn't list, didn't appear to listen to the important information and science that staff presented regarding the effect of off-leash dogs on the open space and wildlife, nor the time and cost to try to correct that effect. As a resident, I can't understand why city residents would decide to agree to the ongoing maintenance of a dog park that is reported to be the largest in the state. Why is it so much of a, why is so much of an off-leash area needed there? The city has other dog parks, and you can walk a dog in any park, neighborhood, street in Westminster, 336 square miles of it. Council's decision should have considered more than comments from the activated guardian group. There are 113,000 residents on the line for this decision. The June 3rd study session was council's opportunity to listen and consider the information that was provided by park staff. This was the opportunity for council to hear the science of rehabilitating and protecting this site. That didn't happen. Five members of council essentially chose to have a plan created without changing any of the overuse issues that has brought this open space to the point it is now. In my opinion, council kicked the can down the road. I'm disappointed and disturbed. I didn't witness, witness much courageous leadership in the comments council shared and the ultimate dis- decision given, direction given. Also listening to the study session, I witnessed a punitive tone. Comments like parks should have been doing more. Why wasn't cleanup better? Why now? It's been going on for 20 years. My opinion, the only person that should be responsible for cleaning up dog droppings are the do- dog owners themselves. The city shouldn't have to assign staff or use volunteers for ongoing dog dropping cleanup. The guardians volunteer plan is great, and I applaud it. I do. But where have these regular users been the left for the last 20 years? I have the opportunity and pleasure to also be an employee of the city, and I believe the majority of employees show up each day at work to provide the services that they were hired for. I believe they were hired for their education, training, experience, and passion for their position. I would offer that being respected for the education, training, experience, and passion would be an import, would be important to them and why they're, why they work for the, for Westminster. What I witnessed was some very disrespectful questions, accusations, and attitude shown by some members of council. I did not witness a whole lot of respect of staff. Again, I was disappointed and angered. I encourage Council to reconsider the direction that was provided on this important property and not kick that can, can down the road. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Bill Larrond.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, evening almost. Okay, I just have a few brief comments about the dog park. I've spoken two other times about it. Westminster is not the lonely, only municipality facing the issues of off-leash, leash dog parks. In this month's May-June issue of Colorado Parks and Wildlife Magazine, Colorado Outdoors, contains a well-written article discussing off-leash dog parks. The discussion centers around the needs to be considered when establishing such an area. The article should serve as a point of guidance in future discussions and decisions when it needs to be made. It's not an article that supports either side. It gives a very well-thought-of, well-examined, uh, discussion in regards to what we have been presented by Parks and Recreation. Why the current, there's no reason been forwarded, in my, my knowledge, why the current dog park should be shrunk to one-tenth of its current size. Some of the reasons, 175 tons of dog poop per year. That's 350,000 pounds of dog poop. I have a problem with that figure. How did they come up with it? Where did it come from? Is something that came out of somebody's head? Did, did, did they weigh this? Did they weigh the poop as it was coming out? And if they weighed it all, and it was 175 tons, that should be pretty much all the poop that's there, if not more. There's also several photos of plants that were indicate, indicated were, uh, endangered. And that these plants would die and go off into Never Never Land if we continued to allow the dogs to run loose. Well, more than 20 years ago, that land was a cattle pasture. Cattle are much larger than dogs. They do more damage to the land than a dog would. And the poop that they live, leave is far greater in amount than what we have with the dogs. But my favorite reason for this is the parking overcrowding. Certainly, there is overcrowding in the parking. No doubt about it. Does that mean that we shut it down because there's overcrowding? Maybe we should think of a solution like, uh, more parking. People want this. People want the dog park. And they should be provided with ample parking for it. And the people that complain about the parking in their neighborhoods are justified, for sure. But the solution is not to close the dog park. It's to find a way to make more parking. Let's remember that this dog park isn't just for the dogs. It's for the people. It's for me. I'm a survivor of, of open-heart surgery. I have to exercise. And it, the park provides an opportunity for me to take my dog, walk with it, get my exercise, enjoy the outdoors, enjoy the wonderful views that we have, and let my dog run free. It's almost a meditative experience for me. Now I know that I've come up here and complained about things, but the city is wonderful. I've lived all over the world. I've lived many countries. And there's nothing like what we have here in Westminster, much less the United States. The park system, the parks, recreation, and library system here is, is unbelievable. It's great. I have no problems with the park and recreation department. I have a problem just with this issue. Nothing in my four years of living here, which is not a long time, probably most of you have been here many times, more than that, but nothing has changed my feelings about this, this city. I, I chose to retire here. I chose to retire here because of the, the community, because of the opportunities we have here. And one of those opportunities is that dog park. And it is something that I look forward to with my dog and me. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Bethany Yaffe. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Bethany Yaffe. I, I'm on the Westminster Hills Community, I'm sorry, Westminster Hills Open Space Community Advisory Team. Um, I'm here speaking with you today because following the study session last Monday, it was clear to me that City Council has limited information on what happened during the Westminster Hills Open Space CAT. Um, I was also disappointed by how city staff was treated. I also want to make clear that I'm a user of this space, or I was, but my dog became reactive after he was attacked, so now I cannot use this space. I also have the advantage of a bachelor's in biology, a master's in environmental science and engineering. I'm a licensed professional engineer with the state of Colorado. And I'm a certified sustainability professional. So I work in this every day. This is one of the reasons why I volunteered for the CAT, because while I don't work directly on reclaiming land, it is an integral part of my job to make sure that whatever land we disturb will not, um, carry pollutants and soils and, um, into our stormwater and make sure it's not getting blown off by, by wind. And I felt like I could bring a perspective of both the dog owner. I love my dogs. I love taking them to places, but also knowing how hard it is to maintain short grass prairie in these areas. So I have over 10 years of reclaiming these, these type of sites. When we started with the CAT, we were given a packet, which I forgot to bring up, um, here. And this has all the information, um, provided by city staff, which included, this is the, um, the ERO, the stewardship plan, uh, area maps, as well as like how the, the land was purchased and why. Colorado State Wildlife Plan, and how dogs are impacting the site based on scientific journals. This packet was comprehensive, and it was compelling. I came in just knowing what I knew, like trying to get grass to grow here is hard. And I learned a lot. This also shows very clearly, as well stated, that off-leash dogs are detrimental to this site. It is impacting how, um, the native grasses and native animals can be on this site, as in the native grasses are, are just decreasing, and the native animals cannot access it as completely as they did before. During the CAT, we spent time with dedicated and knowledgeable staff from the city and from Jefferson County Open Space. Most people came in assuming that we could protect this land with pretty much just waste stations, making sure people stayed on trails for the most part, muddy day things, like all these things that make a lot of sense. It's great, right? We like it. Lots of thumbs up around the room when we talked about these things. But despite what, but as we had these discussions, it became very clear to most of the people on the CAT that we needed to do a little bit more to make sure that this land, could be a thriving piece of land that was beautiful and had grasses and birds and other animals that are, that are right now prohibited because of the current use. Despite what has been suggested, we did work through all the focus areas. Two of the focus areas were very robust, and we went through the, the, the last focus areas at the last meeting. And because the, the discussion was so robust with the others, we were able to say, yep, we talked about that. Yep, we talked about that. Yep, we talked about that. We were able to draw maps, um, of the site and indicating what people wanted to see. Two people wanted no change to the site. One person wanted minimal changes to prevent people from entering from the north. One person wanted to protect delicate spaces, but it was still like roughly 300 or more acres. Four people recommended decreasing the size to 100 acres or less. But this was even a compromise, because all of us saw how the use was so detrimental, and we thought, you know what? We love this site. Everybody loves this site. This is the area that's most impacted right now. It's going to be the hardest to restore, so let's keep this at 100 or so acres. It's still one of the biggest dog parks in the state. Like, everybody wins. So even within the CAT, there was a consensus. And while we didn't get to vote, we had an ability to say, yep, we want more trail, we want better trail maps. We want more waste stations. And the majority of people that wanted to decrease it, wanted to decrease it significantly. City staff and Jefferson County Open Space staff did an excellent job presenting information and sharing, sharing previous experiences in adjacent, in adjacent cities. For instance, solid waste pickup immediately only decreases nitrogen loading by 56%. That's important because that extra nitrogen impacts the native soils. And it doesn't, it, it allows more, um, non-native grasses to grow. Community cleanup days were not enough. Community engagement, um, which is great, like there's no poop fairy, so pack it out. While it increased people's, like, happiness, it didn't actually do anything. The Westy Dog Park Guardians recommendations fall painfully short of actually protecting this site. So I'm asking City Council to reengage with city staff and other experts in this field with the professionalism that they deserve to learn why they did not recommend option one.
Your, your time is up.
I have 14 seconds.
No, you're over.
Okay, I apologize. Thank you so much.
The next speaker is Tanya O'Connor.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, councilors. I am also here as a member of the Who's CAT. It has come to my attention, um, as well, that perhaps you all do not understand what actually happened at the CAT. I am here to clear up some misconceptions that were apparent to me during last week's listening session. The members of the CAT were chosen to reflect different interest groups. I was representing my neighbors and coworkers on the CAT. I'm qualified to speak on this subject because I have lived across the street from the Sims Dog Park Parking Lot for 29 years. I have been reaching out to the city for six years with my concerns about the environmental destruction of the land. I have observed degradation of the land down to the, um, dirt due to parking of cars on grass, but mostly due to the overuse and trampling by people and off-leash dogs. I have observed the disappearance of ground-nesting western meadowlarks, and this is very disturbing to me. Additionally, there has been much discussion about mental health as a justification for keeping the site as is. I do not dispute that the land is good for mental health, but my mental health has been negatively impacted for the last six years due to this destruction. I am a daily walker and runner in this area, and I used to run in the dog park, but have been chased by out-of-control dogs, so I no longer do so. I continue to walk on Sims, where every day I observe the condition of the area, the area deteriorate. I can't escape it. If I want to enjoy the view of the mountains, I am also reminded of the sad state of the area. This is also true for many of my neighbors and coworkers who cannot access the space because, um, they have dogs that are afraid of other dogs that are off-leash, um, attacking them, um, and things like that. So I'm not, um, as Bethany, uh, mentioned, I'm not asking, um, to get rid of the dog park altogether, but I think that we have the obligation, um, to share it and have the people who want to use this, such as myself and my neighbors, and who cannot, um, have an area where it is just, um, on-leash dog, dogs. So I'm asking you to please meet again with West, Westminster City staff. With the professionalism they are due to learn why they do not recommend the option that you chose. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Melissa Koss.
Welcome.
Hi. I'm just tall. This is slick. Thank you. Greetings. I'm Melissa Koss. Uh, I'm here tonight because I also was a member of the CAT, uh, in that process. Like other members, we watched yesterday, our last week's behavior and, um, felt like we really needed to come and, and get you guys some information that maybe you had been lacking prior. First, I just wanted to speak to the fact that city, um, employees are professionals. They, um, they are due a certain respect that I felt like they were not treated with, um, by several of the, um, council members. I just want to encourage you, I recognize that some people join City Council because they're frustrated with the way the city works. I get that. But you still have to figure out how to work with them, treat them with respect, and recognize them as the industry, industry experts that they are. They're a great resource to you as you're making this choice, and I would encourage you to leverage them as such. In terms of the CAT process, I feel like much of it was grossly mischaracterized and misunderstood. Facilitation, my background is as a, I'm a master's of science in conflict. That's what I do. It's kind of my jam. And conflict is hard. And facilitation actually isn't actually about consensus. Facilitation is actually about drawing out the opinions in their fullness, in their depth, so we can understand them and as decision-making parties, make choices appropriately with a full understanding of how people feel about them. So, can we get consensus sometimes, and is that nice, great? But the fact that this was contentious was actually reflective of the fact that it was put together well. You had really deep feelings from everyone in very different ways. And, um, and that, that tension, that feeling of failure because it wasn't easy is actually how you know it was going well. It's how you know you were getting the information you actually needed. I will say that there was the broadest, as a professional, it was the broadest representation I've ever seen of, uh, of differing opinions and interest groups of any facilitation I've ever sat in. So I will commend the staff for that, that they gathered people together well. I will say that, um, some things that I, I came into it with an interest simply in the city, uh, in, in the neighborhood issues. I've been up here before. I've said that the neighborhood is overrun with folks that are parking in the neighborhood. It's got some safety issues that affiliate with it, et cetera. I've said this multiple times. I've been up, for eight years. I've been kind of hitting that bell and saying, please, please address this. But I left it, so I came in saying, take care of the neighborhood. And I left going, holy crap. There is some stuff happening in the dog park that we cannot ignore anymore. It is the crown jewel of Westminster, period. And it deserves to be taken better care of than it is right now. Right now, it is, um, it is not actually accessible to everyone. It was stated, there's 313,000 people in this, uh, in this city. And of them, uh, the research says that only, um, 27% of the city owns a dog. Well, that puts us down to 30,000 people. And then of that, 50% take them into dog-friendly or, or receptive areas. That brings us down to 15,000. And then 80% of those were surveyed, uh, surveyed at the dog park. 80% of those said they just don't want anything to change. That brings us to 12,000. Let's round it up, 15,000 people. That is by far, that is a far cry from majority of Westminster. I'm going to very strongly recommend that you please survey your public before you decimate 10% plus of our open space as a city. Because the question is not if it will be decimated. All you have to do is look at Firestone, Evergreen, Kennedy that was in, in Denver. All of the dog parks are dirt and weeds. That's not actually a question. The question is of how much and how fast. So please, survey your city before you make such a sweeping choice and make sure that you're actually representing the majority in that choice. I, I recognize that there's some discussion around mental health benefits. I have posed two things repeatedly, and I said it in the CAT, and I've said it to folks that are in the Westy, um, Dog Park Advocacy Group, and the two questions are this. Number one, why is such a small percentage of the population getting authoritative decision-making influence over such a large, vast resource? Why is that? Why can't I take my daughter there? Why can't my husband run there anymore because he's chased by dogs? Why can't other groups, people that are older, that are concerned about being jumped on by dogs, people that bike that don't want to be chased by dogs or run? Why can't they, why can't they have access to? Why can't it be shared? Why must all 400 acres be taken and used in a way that's not really accessible to a significant portion of the population? And secondly, um, I, I really, I'm going to skip that. I'm just going to tell you that I'm going to ask you to please push for a town hall. Because the voices you're hearing don't actually represent the city. They're the loudest, but they're not the best informed. They're the loudest, but they're not the, the most, um, they're not the, the broadest representation. So please, have, have another town hall, and please attend it. Please hear your constituents talk. Um, and then secondly, um, please survey, survey the community and actually get some hard data that's not kind of slanted in one direction so you can make that choice and represent the public. Thank you for your time, um, and have a good night.
Thank you. The next speaker is Carol Gosseheimer. Welcome.
Thank you. So I'm here to talk about a couple of things tonight, and of course, starting out with the airport. I'd like to request that you take time to speak to the aviation attorney to learn more about the law. And Sierra, you are prepared to defend your citizens against the atrocities occurring at Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport. In my public comment email sent on Saturday, I included a listing of questions that were shared with you earlier. shared with you earlier and other case study information that would be important for you to be aware of. These questions could easily help guide your discussion with the aviation attorney and will be very informative. As a taxpayer, I request that you invest at least one hour with this attorney to ask the questions that were sent and discuss ways that you can protect the citizens of Westminster. This will use approximately 2.5 percent of the allocated annual budget for the attorney, an excellent investment. The next thing I'd like to talk about is the dog park. First, I'd like to say that I have great respect for the work that the city staff did and the presentation that they shared with all of you at the study session. I thought they did an amazing job, and I have a great respect for everything that they've done throughout this process to help people be informed about the importance of this land. And I will also say that I'm a dog owner, and I support everything that's been said, and especially about accessibility. I have a dog that doesn't want to be mauled by other dogs, and this park is not accessible. I can walk to that park from home, but I cannot go there. And the proposal to eliminate the whole west side of dog leash, yeah, the miller moth, right? On-leash on the other side makes it even less accessible for us who do not wish to go into the dog park. So that's kind of my background. So I was concerned and very disappointed in the vote at the study session regarding the Westminster Hills open space. I shared information and thoughts with you in an email sent on Saturday, and I hope you've taken some time to read that. The Westminster Hills open space hosts a rare short grass prairie and many endangered and rare species, many of which have significant ecological importance. Ongoing use of this space by unleashed dogs will continue to destroy the already degraded environment, and eventually it will become extremely expensive, if not impossible, to restore. The prairie space and its endangered species could be restored, should be restored and preserved for current and future generations. I'd like to request that minimally, the city slow down the decision and engage in a more fair public process to discuss and review the best use of this space. The surveys that were conducted were biased, were not statistically valid, as they did not have proper sampling methods, adequate sample sizes, and certainly did not have unbiased data collection. Therefore, the data did not fairly represent in any way the opinions of Westminster residents. The data and public comment mostly told the story of dog owner preferences to the exclusion of others. And I'll also add that all of the press that has been received has also been biased completely towards the dog owners. I'd like to suggest hiring a firm such as RRC Associates out of Boulder to conduct a comprehensive, statistically valid, and fair survey to shine light on what the citizens, all the citizens of Westminster really want. If you look at the questions that were asked, they were completely biased. I mean, you know, it's important when you're doing a study to ask unbiased questions, and I don't blame the city staff for that, but we need professionals to conduct a survey. So I'd like to share some data from Jefferson County Open Space Conservation Green Print 2025, they do this every five years, and this should share some light on what Westminster residents who participated in data collection also want. So Jefferson County residents were asked, why is public open space and parkland important to you? 78 percent selected wildlife and wildlife habitat. They also indicated the following preferences. 92 percent said stay-on-trail requirements, 90 percent developing and managing trails for minimal impact, 88 percent seasonal slash temporary closures for wildlife, 86 percent closing-sensitive areas. From this data, you can see these see that the majority of Jefferson County residents are in favor of preserving our open space, its flora and fauna, and that would also include Westminster residents. The short grass prairie performs critical services for the environment, such as providing clean air and water, but perhaps the prairie's most intriguing characteristic is a superpower that we can use to combat climate change and the effects of greenhouse gas emissions, and this is called carbon sequestration. I shared more about this in the email I sent to the council and public comment on Saturday.
Your time is up, thank you.
The next speaker is Cindy Stoudt.
Welcome. Thank you. Hello, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name's Cindy Stoudt, and I'm a proud member of the Westy Dog Park Guardians. On behalf of the Guardians, we thank you for your attention to the Who's Dog Park and your commitment to the citizens of Westminster. We are grateful that you considered the mental and physical health of your citizens as they use this wonderful amenity. The dog park truly is a sanctuary for all of us. Moving forward, we'd like to reiterate our desire and commitment to partner with the city in some kind of advisory capacity, whether that be an advisory board or some other approved structure. We look forward to learning the best way to be a long-term active partner with the city in stewarding this area. We've got two immediate things we'd like to focus on. Number one, a community pickup day. We'll be in touch with Hayden to work out a day for this in the near future. We all too well attended impromptu pickup days this spring and believe we can help the city draw a large crowd. Number two, there was a question asked at the study session last week about existing barbed wire fencing that remains in and around Who's. One community member came through with a few pictures of areas where that remains. You have a picture in front of you with a map of the area and some markups. The red solid lines indicate remaining barbed wire fencing that's still installed. You can see it along the entire western boundary at Indiana and part of the northern boundary from Indiana east to the edge of the Skystone neighborhood, that's picture number two. The solid red circle in the map indicates where there are rolls of barbed wire on the ground that have been there for years. Our friend that took the picture today said the grass has grown up so high around it now, unless you knew it was there, you couldn't see it. She also reported many prairie dog holes around the rolls of barbed wire. I didn't include the picture she took of the rattlesnake, but once she saw that, she left. The dotted red circles are additional areas where there are rolls of barbed wire on the ground. Some of them are rolled, some of them are laying flat. They've all been there for years. According to her, it would do more damage to remove them now than waiting until the grass is died down in the late fall or winter. So I hope that helps with the beginning of the cleanup process for the western side of Who's and as a jumpstart on community involvement for the Who's Dog Park. We look forward to seeing the progress made as these efforts get underway. Thank you again.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Andrew Guthrie.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Normella, and esteemed councilors. My name is Andrew Guthrie, and I'm representing the Westy Dog Park Guardians. To echo Ms. Stoudt's thanks to the entire council through this process, we realize and appreciate the extra hours you have all put in, and you have our gratitude. On a side note, I'd also like to thank Westminster Fire and the Park Rangers for the rescue efforts at Stanley Lake on Friday. They made Westminster residents proud. I'm going to go a little off-script here, and there have been some comments about statistically valid surveys. One question I did have is on the preview to the PRLO board. We were presented with a 63 percent statistically valid survey saying that 63 percent of Westminster residents are in line with the current dog park offerings. So there is a statistically valid survey. I'm not sure why it wasn't presented at the study session, you'll have to ask staff about that, but it was presented at the PRLO board meeting as a statistically valid survey. Now comes the fun part, to bring the dog park plan to life. As Deputy City Manager Opie said in the last cat meeting, this will be a crawl, walk, run approach. We understand this is a long-term project with budget constraints. That's why the Guardians' initial recommendations focused on a less-is-more approach, essentially measurable successes with minimal budget impact. We look forward to establishing baselines and setting goals for the future of Westminster Hills open space. The Guardians stand ready to fulfill our mission of being responsible for community partners with the city of Westminster. We look forward to being part of the ongoing stewardship of this area that's so important to the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Aubrey Hicks.
Welcome.
Thank you, I'm going to do better this time than I did last month when I was quivering and shaking and sounding really angry. It was just pure terror.
Deep breath, and you're good.
Well, hello, Mayor McNally, Mayor Pro Tem, Normella, and the rest of the city council, thanks for having me, thank you for your time and your thoughtful consideration. Last week was a really big, long meeting, I know it was exhausting for a lot of people. The study session was really encouraging, and we look forward to working together as dog park guardians with you guys on the dog park to make it better than it already is. As part of our mission to be a responsible partner to the city, I'm speaking tonight asking for updates on the June 3 study session's action items. We would like status, statuses for the following items. Okay, first, there was a lot of talk about parking. Almost all councilors mentioned it, but specifically Councilors Azidi Demont and Ireland asked for a parking analysis, including the numbers of complaints over the past 12 months, a look into trends, see if our parking problem is getting worse or better with better signage and enforcement. Last week, we were told that from May 2023 to 2024, about 440, I couldn't hear the last digit in the 440 that she said, the audio was kind of odd, 440 tickets were issued, and 29 were from Westminster addresses. Does that mean that the cars were registered in Westminster? I'm not sure what that comment meant. Where exactly were these cars parked? And are we sure they were actually even dog park visitors? Could they have possibly have been bikers? There's a lot more biking on the streets over there, too. I'm just wondering, like, where were these cars coming from? What was each ticket for? Were they literally parking where it was illegal to be parking? Was it like, oh, we saw that you don't have your registration? Like, what were the tickets for? And like, how often was parking enforcement ticketing, like, happening in the area? Like, what was the frequency, what days and what times? Because we know there's like, different amounts of people that are at the park at different times of the week and times of the day. I hope you've already received these details, but I'm not sure, there may be some analysis that's needed, like, based on raw data to like, kind of determine and dig into that stuff. And I'm also not sure if you guys are aware, but it looks like parking enforcement action's been taken, so we've been saying, like, enforce the parking, that'll help, right? So there were people, parking enforcement was at the park on Saturday morning, I was there from about 9:30 to 11:30. At 10:30 specifically, for a few minutes, I don't know, probably 15 minutes, I witnessed the, and a couple other people that were there, witnessed people going around, or a person going around ticketing cars. Most of the cars that I saw, actually, all the cars that I saw were parked in the areas that were like, white with diagonal, that are basically like, loading areas. So they were illegally parked, they were in the lot. I did not see any on Sims. I did not go into the neighborhood to see if anybody was in the neighborhood, but tickets were definitely issued about 10:30 on Saturday morning in the Sims parking lot. After that, and when I drove in, by the way, I had to wait a few minutes for a spot, because I'm not going to get a ticket, I want to go to the dog park. I personally posted on social media later that day advising that parking enforcement should be regularly expected, and if there's no space available, just turn on your dog's favorite tune and wait five minutes, because people are coming and going all the time. You're going to get a spot in probably five minutes if we just exercise parking patience. And then just as a final note on the parking, I left at 11:30, about half that lot was empty, it was getting pretty hot. I have two, like, black fur dogs, and it's just too hot at that point to be there. So definitely a peak in parking around 10:30, but it really fizzled out pretty fast. But moving on, other actions from last week, I only have one minute. Counselor Carmelia, you asked about barbed wires, Cindy just gave an extremely great update, gave you a map and all the things. I'm just hoping, wondering, accountability, see when we can expect for these things to be taken care of. Last week, Joe said he'd get it done within a month, it sounds like maybe that's not possible with some of the stuff that's like intertwined with grass. Counselor Ireland asked how much we're spending right now to manage the open space, and no specific answer could be provided in the moment by PRL staff, so I think that's a really important thing to have, because if we're asking for budget, we really should know what the current budget is, so we can make good decisions. Counselor Norrell, you asked what staffing and maintenance plan is for Cherry Creek and Chatfield, so that we might be able to take some notes from them. And finally, Counselor Hart requested a public meeting regardless of the outcome of this June 30, June 3 study session. Has this been scheduled? Because I've been unable to find it anywhere on the city's websites, so we're getting pretty close. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Linda Bova.
Welcome.
Good evening. I'm a member of the Guardians, and I'm here to request two things. The first request was initially presented in the Guardians' research and recommendations document. We are requesting the opportunity to facilitate the Ryan Pell memorial bench and possible fundraising opportunities for it. Ryan spoke at a previous city council meeting, he lost his wife and son in a car accident caused by a drunk driver. His wife and son loved the dog park. Ryan requested the possibility of a memorial bench, and we would like to support him. My second request is asking PRL's permission for the Guardians to use the backside of the kiosks at the dog park as a way to communicate with the public. The kiosks would be used for posting upcoming events like park cleanups. The kiosks would also be used, we would use them for volunteering, getting, notifying people the needs for volunteers and for education. Currently, there are, currently, there are items that people have lost in the dog park that are hanging on the fences and posts and on top of the waste containers. A portion of the kiosks could also be used as a lost and found. I hope these requests will be met, and thank you for giving me the time. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Sherry Griffin.
Welcome.
Hi, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and Council. My name is Sherry Griffin. My first time speaking to you, I shared that I lived with my sister, who is a cancer survivor and handicapped. Although due to recent events, she's currently a resident in a senior care home in Arvada. Her cancer was in 2006, they got it all, and she no longer has cancer. But eight years ago, everything went sideways. She was hospitalized with sepsis and almost died. It was discovered that the bones were dead in her left hip and femur, caused by the radiation treatment. Then several surgeries to stabilize her, followed by an operation to remove the left half of her pelvis. She almost lost her left leg, they were able to save the leg, but it isn't functional. Up until this past Christmas, she was able to walk short distances with the assistance of a walker. Suddenly, she was unable to tolerate weight on her right leg and couldn't walk at all. X-rays revealed that the right hip socket was fracturing, the bone had become brittle and porous, delayed damage from radiation. She's had four surgeries since January, and she's still unable to stand. She's been in and out of the hospital, back and forth to skilled nursing four times, and now at an assisted living facility. She hasn't been home since Christmas, she may never walk again. Hopefully, she will be able to continue to work, she loves her job as a senior technical writer at Google. The reason I'm talking about my sister is, once again, Rocky Flats. The bridge across Indiana linking the buffer zone to the rest of the community, the proposed expansion of the Greenway Trail, and although this council is not involved in the decision about the underpass at Highway 128, the recent news that Boulder County is reconsidering their involvement in the Greenway project. Yesterday, I was visiting her, and in the lobby was a stack of the most recent edition of the Arvada Press with a front page headline, "Plutonium Found in Indiana Street Air Filters Near Rocky Flats, Boulder Commissioners Reconsider Trail Project." I had read the online versions of this reporting when they first came out, but this one is more in-depth, so I took a few copies and I submit the article to you. I'm here talking about this again because why on earth would decisions be made to move forward with these projects when cancer is a real risk? Cancer is a horrible disease, and the treatments for it will someday be seen as barbaric. My sister didn't get cancer from Rocky Flats, but others did. So I'd like to end with a couple of questions. Why is this project so important that it supersedes public health concerns? Why is Westminster Parks and Rec insisting that council is powerless to stop this project from connecting to Westminster open space? Why does the Greenway Trail need to be protected? During the May 20th study session, buried among discussions and other questions, city manager asked at 3213, "How do we protect the Greenway Trail?" I'd like to know, why do we need to protect the Greenway Trail? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Carolyn Vardman. Welcome.
Counsel, there are significant safety and congestion concerns at Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport. Touch-and-go operations conducted primarily by flight schools pose risks to Westminster residents. Council needs to help mitigate these risks and improve the safety and quality of life for residents. By now, council is aware of a recent plane accident in Arvada. My thoughts and my heart are with the individuals who were on the aircraft. It's amazing there were no ground injuries, but this incident underscores potential dangers. While flight schools are flying in a traffic pattern as they do frequently at RMMA, they are supposed to maintain a 1,000-foot altitude in the downwind, which is while they are flying parallel to the landing runway. This is according to FAA regulations where aircraft must maintain an altitude of 1,000 feet above congested residential areas. As they turn to set up for landing, they will slow down and reduce their altitude as necessary. This is where the regulation has a caveat, and the 1,000-foot rule is not required while in the process of takeoff and landing. This caveat poses a significant safety risk to communities surrounding the airport, particularly during touch-and-go operations. Flight schools frequently operate below the 1,000-foot limit as they practice landing and taking off in a continuous pattern around the airport. If the FAA considers this to be a safe altitude, given room for pilot or equipment error, why are planes allowed to fly below this level in our Westminster neighborhoods? I have been continuously unnerved by the possibility of such an incident happening, and I have filed numerous complaints about aircraft flying below 1,000 feet. If the rule states they must maintain this altitude for safety, then it should be strictly enforced. Additionally, I learned that the Federal Standards District Office, FSDO, typically directs complaints about low-flying aircraft within a five-mile radius of the airport to the air traffic control tower, which is responsible for ensuring compliance with this rule. Touch-and-go operations present a clear safety hazard to local residents. The air traffic control tower has a legitimate case to present to the FAA. Given the high volume of flight training at this airport and the inability of these aircraft to maintain an altitude above 1,000 feet during continuous takeoffs and landings, a request to ban touch-and-go operations is warranted. Now let's talk landing fees. Airport sponsors receiving grant assurance can charge landing fees if they are reasonable and not unjustly discriminatory. If you're skeptical, I suggest consulting your aviation attorney to verify whether Jefferson County has the authority to charge landing fees under their grant assurances. I've even provided evidence, including an email from Tracy Kraft Tharp to former airport director Paul Anzlo, which I submitted through public comment. In the email, Anzlo indicated he would implement landing fees if requested by the commissioners. Here are some proposed solutions. The ATC should prohibit touch-and-go operations to reduce congestion and enhance safety. The council should hold the ATC accountable and request this action citing the safety and congestion concerns. Write them a letter, CCR state reps. Another solution is the airport sponsor can implement landing fees, this is Jefferson County, to manage the crazy traffic and generate revenue for the airport. This action would also align with the requirement under their grant assurances for the airport to be self-sustaining. The council should urge JECO to do this and highlight the safety and congestion concerns, as well as the financial impact. For instance, flight schools' operation generated $600,000 in 2023, which constitutes about 8% of the total operating revenue. This revenue isn't very much at all. Instituting these fees would be a win-win situation for everyone involved. Here are some further arguments for action. Safety. The 1,000-foot rule is designed to ensure safety by providing a buffer for errors. However, touch-and-go operations frequently violate this rule, creating significant risks for residents. FSDO told me that during warmer months, piston-engine aircraft often operate at altitudes of 400 to 500 feet due to reduced engine performance, which also violates the 1,000-foot rule. Congestion. Continuous touch-and-go operations create congestion flight patterns over residential areas, increasing the likelihood of accidents. This congestion extends air traffic patterns and heightens safety risks for more residents. Additionally, it raises the likelihood of ATC errors and contributes to controller fatigue. Revenue generation. Imposing landing fees would provide additional revenue for the airport, contributing to its financial sustainability and reducing the frequency of touch-and-go operations. I think these are all valid grounds, and your support in advocating for these actions is greatly appreciated.
Thank you. The next speaker is Beth McBride. Welcome.
Right, thank you. My name is Beth McBride, and I appreciate your listening to me and to the residents here. I'm coming as a resident and a guardian. I'd like to introduce you to the community that I have met since I've been volunteering out at the Westy Dog Park and Open Space. I handed you a few pictures taken by Susan Herple, a professional photographer and guardian and dog mom. The pictures show people, the dogs, the views of the park. What makes up this community? People, their dogs, friends, families, relatives who come to exercise, meet friends, and gaze at the views. This is our rec center. The park is a promenade for dogs with strollers, dogs with toddlers, dogs with grandparents, dogs with relatives, bikers with dogs, runners with dogs, seniors with dogs, and those whose dogs have passed, and they just come around to the dog park because they wanna touch a dog, talk to people about their dogs. Now, who are these people? There's a gentleman who uses a walker, and he throws balls for his dogs while he safely walked about and didn't have to worry about getting tangled up with the leash. You've met Jim, who's an 81-year-old who had surgery and walks his dog as therapy, and he used that to get back to health. Others like Marlene and Skip, an elderly couple, bring their folding chair to the entrance at 100th Avenue. Skip had back surgery and can't walk far, so he sits in his chair while his wife walks their dog about a quarter of a mile. She comes back, she sits down, he walks the dog at a quarter of a mile, and they rotate because their dog can run, as they say, they love the park. Their dog can run, and they can come back and sit and rest when they need to. Who else comes? You see pictures of young families there on First. One family came with their one-week-old baby and a very proud grandma for a walk in the park. Children ride their bikes with their parents and dogs run alongside, and it also is a community of, excuse me, committed people. All people who come there, either from Westminster or elsewhere, have said they would pay to park or to enter the park. And yes, they would join and participate in cleanup, in maintenance, or trail work, or restore vegetation. In other words, they are committed to work to save the park. Of course, there have been problems, but people are pitching in to clean up after their dogs, and we're looking forward to helping with the city and this community. We've also shown commitments by coming together quickly and giving our time, expertise, doing research, checking out ordinances and zoning issues, and learning about restoration of vegetation and animal life. Some people even spent their own money buying poop bags when the dispensers are empty. Another example of commitment to others happens when two dogs got frightened and ran from their owner. The community worked with the animal control from Westminster and Broomfield. Phone calls went out, texts went out, and people left their homes and went back to the park, and people walked the park, they drove around, and it all had a happy ending. Others include, others that come to the park around the world, I mean, excuse me, around the country. I met a couple from Pittsburgh, and they can live anywhere. They chose to come out here to Colorado, looked all around. They love the dog park, they heard about the dog park, and so they love the availability of Denver, the mountains, and the outside activities. Parents from residents come from all over. Parents of, one of our residents came, and he's from Maine. He says, "We've got pretty mountains, beautiful mountains, but they weren't as beautiful as when the crowds lift up off of these mountains and you see the snow-covered peaks, our Rockies." My favorite visitor with her dog came was a young woman from Poland who moved here three years ago and said she just became a U.S. citizen. She told everyone how proud she is to have the right to vote here. All kinds of people visit and are ready and willing to not love the park to death, but we are willing to work to love the park back to life. I believe it is not just a dog park, but it should be referred to as the Westminster Community Dog Park. People return to their parking, the parking lot and say, "This is the best part of my day, my week, or my month. This is Seven Flags Park for Dogs. This is spiritual conning, zen-like. This is a magnificent place for views. This is a gem. I'd like to say this is Westminster." I thank you for listening and listening to all of us.
Thank you. The next speaker is Joan Palmer. Welcome.
Good evening. Let's start with the first page. Highlighted a couple sections on there. That is out of the Westminster Window, the June 6th edition. Comments made by Bill Christopher, and I would like to echo those about the conduct at the recent meeting. Not the most recent, that'll come up in a minute, but the meeting with the airport people. I was so embarrassed by what was said, I actually went out and apologized to those people for the way they were treated by you, specifically, Councillor Holt. Dave, or excuse me, Councillor Demont, you and Holt had an exchange back and forth. I'm not sure how I feel about that. Perhaps Mayor Pro Tim should have tabled that or stopped that before it went on. It was totally uncalled for. But again, I wasn't the only one that picked up on that. Clearly, Bill Christopher did, too. Okay? Along with that, a lot of talk about the airport and the lead, okay? Second, two pages are an article from Fox News regarding the airport, basically contradicting everything that was said by certain members of this council. I think you should take some time and research that before you speak further on the issue. Thirdly, let's talk about, same subject, the airport. And there was some fear mongering being put out by you, Councillor Holt, about lead being in our water. You can clearly see on this document from the city's website that there is no water in our source or in the people's, when it gets to the people. That would further be backed up in this water report, specifically page 14 and 15, if you'd like to get more familiar with that. So please stop the fear mongering. We don't need it. There's not lead in our drinking water. There's not lead in Stanley Lake. Stop the fear mongering, please. Third page, again, talks about the airport, and jeez, who comes to mind in the highlighted sections? Councillor Holt. You guys were elected to represent us, not to give us a bad name. The way you act is like a 14-year-old with a temper tantrum. It's not professional, it's not becoming of a councillor for the city of Westminster. Next, just on a side note, Councillor Azadi, did you say Juneteenth became a holiday in '22? Is that what you had indicated? Fact check, it was '21, okay? Just, again, fact check, it's '21. Next, I'd like to touch on the dog park. One of the other ladies got up here and talked about the air monitoring having plutonium particles being trapped in the filtration system out there. That's on Indiana. The west side of the dog park is Indiana. That tells me that there's plutonium residue being spread into the dog park. So I hope all of these people that are for the dog park, you're for plutonium in your system and your dog's system. Plutonium's a carcinogen. Think twice, do your research. I'm sure that these filters are legitimate, and if, I'm sure this lady can point you to where that information came from. I saw that also.
Mr. Palmer, you're addressing council, so please.
Okay. I'm just saying, she might have a little better information where that came from. I saw the same article, I wasn't able to find it and resource it. Again, let's fact check before we start talking about things we're not sure of. And in this article, you talk about the health of the people of Westminster. Councillor Hart, are you a doctor now? Do you have a doctorate? Because as far as I can tell, all you've got is a bachelor's degree. It's not a doctorate in health. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Tom Lambo. Welcome.
Hello. My name's Tom Lambo. It's good to be back in front of Westminster. I'm here to lift up the people of Westminster in prayer. Before we begin, there is a lot of truth being revealed, and again, I want to encourage everyone to seek out alternative media sources. Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, in Jesus Victoria's name, we invite you here to the city of Westminster. I lift up all the people of Westminster to you and trust that you will care and protect all of us. You're the Creator of everything. You're the God of all creation. Everything is yours. In John 1, 3 through 4, it states, "All things were created through Him, and apart from Him, not one thing was created that has been created. Life was in Him, and the life was the light of men." We are nothing without you, Father. Our most brilliant minds cannot create anything out of nothing. We must start with something. You started with nothing and have given us everything. Jesus, your love for us is immense. Your life was a demonstration of love, and in 1 Corinthians 13, 4 through 7, you tell us what love is. Love is patient, love is kind, does not envy, it does not boast, it is not proud, it does not dishonor others, is not self-seeking, it is not easily angered. It keeps no records of wrong. Love does not delight in evil, but rejoices with the truth. It always protects, always trusts, always hopes, always perseveres. Help us to extend love to everyone we come in contact with. God, you are everything. You care for your creation. You want us to live in peace. As the enemy continues his frivolous attacks on us, please give us the peace found in Philippians 4:7, which states, "And the peace of God, which surpasses all understanding, will guard your hearts and your minds." will guard your hearts and your minds in Christ Jesus." You also don't want us to be anxious about life's happenings. In 1 Peter 5:6-7, it states, "Humble yourselves therefore, under God's mighty hand, that he may lift you up in due time. Cast all your anxiety on him, because he cares for you." As we call upon your name, no matter what the circumstances, please give us both these verses for our lives. Give us the ability, the ability to turn over our anxieties and give us your peace so that our hearts and minds are guarded as the times we live in intensify. The victory is yours and yours alone. In your victorious name we pray. Amen. Thank you, and you guys have a nice night.
Thank you.
And that was our last speaker.
That brings us to City Managers' Report. Deputy City Manager Andrews.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem, city councilors, and members of our Westminster community. Jody Andrews, Deputy City Manager, filling in for Mark Freitag this week. I have a very brief report for you this evening. The first item up, we received some speakers tonight regarding the Westminster Hills Open Space. And I just want to let City Council and the members of the community know that staff will be returning to City Council in regular meeting of council very soon. That's currently planned for June 24th. And in that meeting, we'll be presenting the important next steps to achieve City Council's direction, including the development of the necessary management plan for the Westminster Hills Open Space in accordance with council's direction. Next slide, please. We have, for the Westy wins, we have a very important one tonight, and it's regarding the 2024 Municipal Clerks' Honor Role. In 2001, General Code created the Municipal Clerks' Honor Role to honor unsung heroes of our communities, our municipal clerks. We have one here with us tonight. The program ran for nine years and coincided with Municipal Clerks' Week. In 2019, the Municipal Clerks' Honor Role was reintroduced to help celebrate the 50th anniversary of Municipal Clerks' Week. This year, more than 400 nominations were received from 38 states, and Westminster City Clerk Abby Fitch was included in this year's nominees. Abby was nominated because she consistently goes far beyond the call of duty for her city, demonstrating exceptional dedication. And as a clear and kind leader, she fosters a positive and supportive work environment. She prioritizes the well-being and growth of her team, ensuring their protection when necessary, and actively encouraging their development and success. Under Abby's guidance, she's cultivated a collaborative, enjoyable, and respectful workplace. She consistently puts others first, exemplifying selflessness and dedication to her role. And we just wanted to recognize that this is a very important nomination for Westminster's very own City Clerk, Abby Fitch. Next slide, please. Things to know, a few items tonight to bring to your attention. Planning Commission tomorrow night, Tuesday, the 11th, is canceled, so that is not happening tomorrow night here in City Council chambers. There is an inclusivity board meeting on Wednesday, June 13th, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m., and that's a hybrid meeting at City Hall in our City Managers' Office conference room, or you can participate or view remotely on Teams. Movies in the Park. This upcoming movie is Minions: The Rise of Gru. Never thought I'd say that in a public meeting. Friday, June 14th, 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. at the Westminster High School. All are welcome, and those are great events and well-attended. City Council Study Session is next Monday, June 17th, here in this room, 6:30 p.m., and you are all welcome. That is a public meeting. And with that, Mayor, we have one more item I'd like to bring to your attention. There is an information-only item in your packet, and that's Item A regarding the replacement municipal court contract updates. So that's in the packet, and that's in our public material for tonight. And then finally, to reach us here at the city of Westminster, you can get ahold of me in the City Managers' Office, and my phone number is 303-658-2003, or you can email me at that address and reach us on any one of our four social media pages. That's all I have, Mayor.
Wednesday is June 12th for the inclusivity, not the 13th.
I'm sorry, June 12th. We'll make a note of that and have that corrected in our documents. Thank you, Mayor.
Any questions? Mayor Protem?
I was just wondering, I am out of town on the 24th, and I would really love to be a part of that conversation regarding the next steps with the dog park. And I was going to ask anyway, I think originally we were gonna take a recommendation back to the community, and so I was just wanting to know, are we gonna be going back to the community as part of just the process that we'd originally, I thought we'd originally proposed? And could that potentially delay us a little bit? I know we want to make decisions regarding the budget, and I know I can be, you know, and I, I can miss this if I have to regarding, you know, being out of town, but I thought I'd ask the question.
Mayor, and Mayor Protem, thank you for the question. I know that we had made some commitments in the community regarding that date in terms of coming forward, but it certainly would be at the will of City Council as to when we come back on that item. It could be delayed, but we are certainly preparing the material and the analyses for presenting on the 24th, but that could be postponed for a period of time if council so desired.
I don't know what the other next agendas look like. That's usually our driving force, how thick they are. We don't have that in front of us. So it'd be July 8th would be the next one?
Yeah, I don't know if the city clerk has that in front of her that... Deputy Doris confirmed that July 8th does have some room.
May I ask my fellow councilors, it's okay if you say no, but I just thought I'd throw that out there.
Counselor Demont?
My concern is what commitments we've made to the community. Can you define that a little better about what, or remind me what exactly our commitment to the community was? Because I do know that this is something that certainly has garnered a lot of attention, so.
I think the reference regarding the June 24th was the next steps following council's directions at the last study session. And that would include addressing the development of the necessary management plan for, for, to go along with the space. And I can, I can just tell you by way of update that the actual management plan would not be ready for that evening. So if council so decided to have the meeting at a slightly later date, then more work could be done on that. I think really the, what staff is preparing for on the 24th is, is the next steps. If council were needing to take, and they, they likely, you likely would be needing to take a step with respect to the Westminster Hills Open Space being used in its entirety for off-leash dog area. So that, that's the step that likely would be begun on June 24th as a first step.
Thoughts? Counselor Carmelia?
I am fully in support of delaying it. That's, I'd rather have everyone at the table.
Anyone else? Counselor Hot?
Yeah, I would like to, if Counselor Numala would like to be a part of it, I'd like to allow her to be a part of it.
Counselor Ireland?
I'm fine with that, too.
Counselor Demont?
Fine with me.
Counselor Azadi?
I think if MPT wants to be part of it, she should be allowed to.
And it's okay with me.
Thank you, everybody.
Yep. It's an important decision. Everybody needs to be at the table. Anything else under City Managers' Report? Thank you. City Council, excuse me, City Council comments. Counselor Azadi?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank everyone for their comments tonight. And what is top of mind for me is, is something that's been, is something that I've been thinking a lot about recently about government. You know, I've learned a lot of things being here. And one of the prevailing themes of government is this concept of, of valid, a logically valid argument versus a true one. And there's a difference. If I told you that all cats are reptiles, and then I said all reptiles can fly, and I conclude, therefore, all cats can fly, that's a logically valid argument, but it's not true. And a role of a policymaker needs to be to learn how to differentiate between what's logically valid and what's true. Because we get presented a lot of information all the time, and not all of it is true, but a lot of it is logically valid. And that's why we're here. Otherwise, we wouldn't, you, you, you wouldn't need a city council because the, the city is really well-run, by the way. It's, we have incredible staff, and they could just run things on their own. But we have to be here because we give strategic direction. And one of those, so just wanted to start with that. And it leads into my next comment on, so Mr. Palmer made this comment that, you know, Counselor Azadi, you're wrong. Juneteenth was official in 2021. And that's a logically valid argument, because the bill that got passed by the state legislature passed in 2021. However, he's wrong, because there were several additional legislative steps that had to be taken before the governor could sign it. So this was actually signed in May, on May 2nd, 2022. That was when it became an official holiday. And that's why it's so important that us up here, we shouldn't jump to conclusions, because there's so much more information that we need to know on everything. And it's okay, Mr. Palmer, if you wanted to criticize me off of what, the information that you had, right? But now that you have more information, and that is the official date, May 2nd, 2022, that's just one example. And that leads into the dog park. Thank you all for your comments on both sides. What I want to say is to Tomas. So last week, Tomas, my conduct, I was a little harsh, and I apologize for that. I think no matter what the disagreements are, I could have conducted myself in a much more civil way to give you guys the opportunity to explain more, right? Because you deserve at, at least the opportunity to speak. And I didn't really allow you to speak because I was so passionate about what I was talking about. So I want to just say sorry publicly to everyone. And I wish that that civility, that level of civility is something that all of us just exude more. And just wanted to say that to you, Tomas, and to your staff.
Counselor Hot?
Yes. I have a question for the city attorney. Is it possible for us, because we didn't meet with an aviation attorney that night, most people didn't have questions, but now that there are more questions, is it still possible to meet with that aviation attorney?
Yes, it is. We can, we can schedule another executive session with her.
Okay, that would be fantastic. And then I agree, if there's any way that we can pull out of the Rocky Mountain Greenway, I'd like to see, learn more about what Boulder's doing and see more what we might be able to do. I did see the report about the plutonium in the air, and I also found that very concerning. And so anything we can do to pull out or not participate, I think, would be the best. And my name is Counselor Hot, not Counselor Holt. It's Counselor Hot, thank you. And I will not apologize for caring about resident health and safety. I did not feel like our residents' health and safety was being taken into account, and it frustrated me. And I'm not going to apologize for that. And what I said that night, I will say again, I will not be shamed into being silent. Because I have sat down with people. I've had the phone calls, I've had the coffee meetings, I've had the one-on-ones where people have told me their personal stories about how their health and their mental health and their physical health is affected and is impacted by the airport. And yes, I might only have a bachelor's degree in psychology, but I learned about the mental health impacts of noise, even with my bachelor's degree. I don't have to, to have a doctorates to, to have learned that. Also, I never said there was lead in the water. So when you talk about fear mongering, I said that our water is two miles away from the airport. My question was, I said, "I'm aware we don't have lead in our water now, but what are we doing to make sure lead doesn't end up in the water?" Because it is two nautical miles away from the airport, our water source for our city. It also, that water goes to the city of North Glenn, and that water also goes to the city of Thornton. So asking, "What are we doing to make sure lead doesn't end up in the water", I think is a fair question. But again, I will not apologize for caring about resident health and safety. And I don't think that I have to be nice when there are other entities who are not caring about government health and safety. And again, I will not be shamed into being silent. Thank you.
Counselor Demont?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody who came out tonight. I just, this'll be the last meeting before we have my town hall for the month. So if you want to join me on the 20th at Cocapelli Beer Company, I'll be there from 6:30 till 8:00. We hang out, drink beer, eat pizza. Some people drink soda, not beer, whatever your, your preference is. I'll be there for that hour and a half, and you can come speak to me about whatever you want, or just hang out with other community members. It's always a good time. So I look forward to that next Thursday, or next week, Thursday, the 20th.
Counselor Carmelia?
Thank you. I just want to thank all the many speakers here tonight. I'll start from the beginning. The first initial speakers, several of them that we heard. I just want to say a deep thank you to them for bringing to light the content and the results of the cat around the Who's Dog Park. I thought it was highly informative and clarifying to understand a little bit of some of the conversations that were held. Since we, the majority of us were not there, it's good to understand how impactful the information the city provided to that cat was and for members of the cat. And it sounds like they were very well-informed. So I'm grateful to the staff for doing such a good job around that. And I just wanted to say thank you to the speakers as well for standing up for our professionals within the city, staff that work for us in Westminster. We really appreciate that. And I also just want to say that I hope that council will think thoroughly about the permanent, long-term effects of what we're doing. I don't know if we've had the information on hand to make a decision at the time that we made it. We got the majority of our information, as we usually do, three days before that study session. And meanwhile, our very well-informed cat members had that information for several months, right? And so I hope that we can take a better look. I know that a lot of our minds were made up walking into that study session. And I want to say that it's okay to take a longer evaluation, the, of the information presented. The info we received was much larger than we usually do. There were, you know, one packet alone was nearly 400 pages of content. And I don't believe that we really thought thoroughly about the impact of the decision that we were making until we were there in that room to make it. I also just want to mention, the Great Outdoors Colorado Board awarded recently, it was in our North Glenn newspaper this evening, they awarded $523,000 in grant money to the city of Woodland Park for a new ambitious plan that they have for that city to acquire 120 acres of new open space. So I want to say congratulations to Woodland Park. And I think that we should be mindful here in Westminster of how wealthy and enriched we are to have so much open space that we have 470 acres to... that we have 470 acres to give away and redesignate. And so I want to make sure that we're being very thoughtful about that process. I also believe that we have more stakeholders to involve that we might have left out in the conversation. And the stakeholders reached out, again, unfortunately for us on council, last minute. And they might not have been informed around the decision we were making until right up until the 11th hour. But there were stakeholders that reached out with much more information to give us a fuller picture the weekend before our study session. And so I don't know if we had time to fully appreciate that. And again, I think minds were made up before walking into that. But that includes Prairie Protect Colorado, and it includes our own Butterfly Pavilion here in Westminster. They are a stakeholder in this process, and they haven't been included. To that, I just, I hope, there's been asks, I don't know the right solution, if it should be a town hall, that was asked. There was another meeting or study session asked. I'm still trying to think through what we believe the right course is. A town hall, you know, I think we've heard from our residents, but it does seem like we're missing the key stakeholders that have the right information to be present. And so maybe that looks like one more study session before we come to our decision-making process. I'll bring up the Rocky Mountain Greenway. As Counselor Hott mentioned, Boulder is considering reconsidering their involvement with the IGA, and I believe that we should as well. And so I want to make sure that that's on our minds. How do we move forward? How do we have a full discussion around our involvement in the Rocky Mountain Greenway? And what can we do for next steps to remove ourselves from that trail? And then I just wanted to say that thank you to the speaker on the RMMA suggestions. I think we have some follow-up and some takeaways on the action items that were presented. And so I will look into those action items and make some calls, as I always do. I, I like calling the county frequently, so I'll be calling on those action items for the RMMA and, and see what we can do regarding next steps. But again, the IGA concerning the RMMA, that was dissolved. And so we might need to be working directly with the new director for those conversations around RMMA. And with that, thank you so much.
Counselor Ireland?
I just like to thank all the citizens who came out and spoke today. Of course, I like to have involvement, so I know what is wanted. And I can't read your minds, so I'm glad you showed up to give me all points of view. I want to talk about the consent agenda that I asked for Item B to be taken off, but I will wait to see if Mayor McNally has anything she wants to say first.
You can talk on that issue when we get to it.
Okay.
Not to belabor, but thanks for everybody that did come out tonight. I know vacations are going to start getting in the way. So when I knew you weren't going to be here, I wondered if you might ask if it could be delayed. I don't know what else staff has about going out another time to community or not. But I know I've asked, if 750,000 visits a year are too much, what's that right number? And we haven't gotten an answer for that, because that should drive a lot of things so that we aren't over-using that space. And then that should also decide whether we are a regional park or if we're just a Westminster park. So, those are just some of the things that still hang out there that I certainly need answers to as we look at that whole picture.
Counselor Demat?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try to be quick, but I've heard a lot of assertions from this side of the dais and that side of the dais about how we made our decisions. I can't speak for anybody but me. I've been here a long time. I've lived in the community near the dog park essentially my whole life. So I was there when it was, you know, there were cows out there. I've been there when there have been dogs out there. I have talked to residents for the last six years about parking issues. I've talked to residents for the last six years about dogs off-leash. We've had, you know, people come and speak to us about their dogs getting attacked. I certainly went into that discussion with a lot of thoughts, because I've been here for six years. And I know that not everybody up here has. I know the mayor's been here a lot longer than I have. But I just have to at least speak for myself, because I don't want anyone who's in the public listening to think that that's how I make decisions, because it certainly is not. If you listen to my comments from the study session, I very much do want them to try some of the solutions for the problems that we've heard before we go and say, "Let's completely throw the whole thing out." That doesn't make any sense to me. And I think that we have a, an opportunity to figure out what those options might be. There certainly are going to be folks who don't agree with what we come up with, no matter what. That's one thing I can, I can promise you of. That's a certainty of life. So I do appreciate the continued feedback that we get, because it's not done. And even with whatever decision that we come up with this year, and we put it forward and put a plan in place, guess what? Probably will continue to change, because that's just the nature of, of these things, especially as the metro area grows, things change. Look at Sims Street now. I never would have thought, I was driving down that with my son, who has his learner's permit. So I got to pay a little bit more attention to my surrounding. And it's completely different. And, you know, that, that's actually encouraging, because I can't tell you how many people have come and complained about it being unsafe for bikes, which I agree. That is, if you've ever driven next to bike going up Sims Hill, that's a scary thing for, probably for both people. So point being, you know, stay tuned, stay engaged. I think that the folks up here, I think, are all certainly listening. I would say that for sure. And you have our attention. But, you know, I, I hope that each of us go at it from that, that way, because it is a lot, a lot of reading. Some of us have got to read that a couple times, because, you know, this isn't a new issue. So I've seen some of that, that material more than once. But it's, it's a big decision, and I appreciate everybody's engagement.
Counselor Ireland?
And it was mentioned, I asked how much we're spending right now. I still haven't got that answer from the city either, what we're spending for the dog park currently. So I still want that answer. Thank you.
That brings us to consent agenda. Is there a motion for Item 8A?
Counselor Demat?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Consent Agenda Item 8A.
Counselor, or Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Item 8A to the consent, of the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
Counselor Demat?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Counselor Hott?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nermella?
Yes.
And Counselor Ireland?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
Item 8B was asked to be taken off of consent agendas. So do I have a motion for 8B?
Counselor Demat?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to authorize the city manager to award and execute a negotiated contract with ECI Site Construction Management, Inc. in the amount of $1,044,590 plus a contingency in the amount of $52,229 for a total not to exceed $1,096,819 for the Wu-Nerf and streetscape construction on Block A4 in downtown Westminster.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Item 8B. Counselor Ireland?
I will not be voting for this. And the reason is, the properties on the west and east side of this streetscape were sold to a developer, one for $200,000, one for $250,000. And then the realtors got $50,000 each for these properties. We just approved a $10 million park down there. Correct me if I'm wrong, staff, but the last I heard, we are $153 million in the hole for the new downtown. Until we start making a profit of some kind for the taxpayers, I will not be approving any more expenditures for the new downtown. And I've been asking for free parking so we can get some people down there. I go down there, it is dead as can be. It's not okay that we keep sending money to a dark hole. And I will not do it anymore. Thank you.
Any other comments? Counselor Demat?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I certainly feel some of the frustration that Counselor Ireland does around, like, the parking. We've talked a lot about that. Should we be charging down there yet? Certainly, over, over my tenure, the downtown, just in general, there's some things I would have done differently if I was at the table at the beginning. So I think. But it's hard to say, because I wasn't at the table, so I don't really know what I would do. But what I do know is, is that the reason I am going to support this is because the businesses and the, the, the old and the new businesses were promised that the streetscape would get done. So as they've torn up Harland and some of those streets, I, I have heard from the business owners. And this is something that, that we as a city had put forward and said that we were going to do. So that's going to help some of the folks that were there that aren't necessarily part of the downtown, you know, the new part. So I think this is an important thing, and it's actually long coming. And I'm glad to see it actually moving forward at this point.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Demat?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Counselor Hott?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Ireland? Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-1 vote.
And do I have a motion to pass Counselors Bill Number 17? Counselor Demat?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to pass Counselor Bill Number 17 on first reading to amend the lease agreement between City of Westminster, a Community Reach Center for the use of the former library building located at 3031 West 76th Avenue.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors Bill Number 17. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Ireland?
I will not be voting for this either. I would like to know more about what Community Reach Center does. Does anyone tell me?
Mayor, we, I believe we have John Burke, our city engineer, can come up and help address Counselor Ireland's question.
Welcome.
Good evening, City Engineer John Burke. Fantastic question. So Community Reach Center has a number of facilities in the north metro area. They provide very important mental health and behavioral services to our residents. I think over 2,100 City Westminster residents use our services currently. They've been in the city, I think, since 1974. Very good partner with the city, particularly with our municipal court. And we're going to be talking later tonight about that as well.
Okay, let me tell you what I know. Just looking at their 990 tax document, their form, the CEO that runs that organization in 2021, I didn't get 22, 22 or 23, made $476,000 a year he paid himself. They have $32 million in assets, as far as land that goes. I think they should be paying market value for rent. I think they can afford it. I don't think the taxpayers should keep subsidizing. They are making a profit. If they're paying the CEO $476,000, the taxpayers deserve more than this.
Thank you.
Counselor Demat?
I'm going to strongly disagree with my colleague. If you have ever had to deal with a young person who has mental health issues in Colorado, you would know that these kind of facilities are few and far between, unfortunately. This particular one, I've used for my, one of my teenagers. So I am, I think we're blessed to have them in the city as a partner. I would imagine that they probably have a board who pays their CEO. I don't really know the financials around it, but I do know the service that they provide our residents. And I can tell you, it's very, very difficult to find people who give care to adolescents. It was very, very difficult during COVID to get care for people who needed the care that are adolescents, let alone adults. So I, I feel okay about this. I'm, again, I think we're blessed to have them in the community.
I, I just want to share, I, I've worked with Community Reach in a lot of different ways. And if we didn't have them, as Counselor Azadi mentions, we have 24% in Jefferson County that we know need mental health. We would be in a sorry state. And I know they struggle for a full staffing, just as anybody else does. But they work hard. I know they work with the Westminster Public Schools and our other school districts. So they are an important piece to our community. Roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Azadi.
Yeah, just to add on to that, it's super important that we fund as many of these as possible, right? There are a lot of things, there are a lot of organizations that actually do work in Westminster, that I would love to see more funding related to mental health and substance abuse. And those two issues right now are severely underfunded, and we could be doing a lot more. That's what I was going to say.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Counselor Hott?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Ireland?
No.
Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
And Counselor Demat?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-1 vote.
That brings us to Counselors Bill Number 18. Counselor Demat?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to pass Counselor Bill Number 18 on first reading to establish a temporary lease agreement between the City of Westminster and the Community Reach Center for the use of the Harris Park Professional Building located at 3621 West 73rd Avenue in association with the replacement municipal court project.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors Bill Number 18. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Hott?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Ireland?
No.
Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
Counselor Demat?
Yes.
And Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-1 vote.
That brings us to Counselors Bill Number 19. Counselor Demat?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to pass Counselor Bill Number 19 on first reading, authorizing the city manager to enter into agricultural lease agreement with Jason Schoonfeld, I hope I said that right, for city-owned properties known as Strasburg Natural Resource Farm and Comanche Farms.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors Bill Number 19. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Ireland?
Yes.
Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
Counselor Demat?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
And Counselor Hott?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
That brings us to Item B2, Move Contingent Upon Approval of Counselors Bill Number 19 on Second Reading. Counselor Demat?
Thank you, Mayor. Move contingent upon approval of Counsel Bill Number 19 on second reading to authorize the payment of fence maintenance and weed control costs not to exceed $100,000 per calendar year.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Item B2. Is there any further discussion? Did you have something?
Just a quick comment. I think this is an area where staff should do a video for the public on this, because it is quite fascinating to learn where our actual waste goes and how that benefits agriculture.
True. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Ireland?
Yes.
Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
Counselor Demat?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Counselor Hott?
Yes.
And Mayor McNally?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
That brings us to the second reading of Counselors Bill Number 16. Counselor Demat?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to pass Counselor Bill Number 16 on second reading, providing a supplemental appropriation of funds in the amount of $370,000 for cart replacement project adopted 2024 budget of golf course enterprise fund.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors Bill Number 16. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.[1728.91]
Counselor Ireland. Counselor Carmelia.
Yes.
Counselor Demott. Counselor Azadi.
No.
Counselor Hart.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Nermella.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-1 vote.
That brings us to City Attorney. Do we have reason for executive session?
Yes, Mayor, we have three executive sessions for council's consideration this evening. The first is an executive session to discuss strategy and progress on a proposed economic development agreement involving the proposed expansion of an existing business at 6272 West 91st Avenue and provide instructions to the city's negotiators pursuant to CRS 64, sorry, 24-6-4024E1 and Westminster Municipal Code 1113C4 and C7.
I will poll the council and ask that you state your name and that you would, are willing to go into executive session.
Obie Zadda, yes?
Clara Carmelia, yes.
Dave Demott, yes.
Nancy McNally, yes.
Sarah Nermella, yes.
Amber Hart, yes.
Christine Ireland, yes.
Second executive session is an executive session to discuss, to discuss strategy and progress on a proposed development agreement at 3030 Turnpike Drive and provide instructions to the city's negotiators pursuant to CRS 2464024E1 and Westminster Municipal Code 1113C2 and C7.
Again, I'll ask each councilor to state their name and they're willing to go into executive session on Item B.
Obie Zadda, yes?
Clara Carmelia, yes.
Dave Demott, yes.
Nancy McNally, yes.
Sarah Nermella, yes.
Amber Hart, yes.
Christine Ireland, yes.
The third executive session and final executive session is an executive session discussion of a personnel matter, goal setting for the council's contract employees pursuant to Westminster Municipal Code 1113C1 and CRS 2464024F1.
Again, state your name and that you're willing to go into executive session for Item C.
Obie Zadda, yes?
Clara Carmelia, yes.